Everyone, welcome to our first meeting of the TNR Committee for 2022. Madam Clerk, can you please call the meeting to order? I'm sorry, I'm trying to bring up my agenda. It was just here and I lost it.
Yes, Madam Chair, I will do roll call. Commissioner Cooper?
Here.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham?
Here.
Oh, here. Where? I'm sorry, Commissioner Graham, I apologize.
That's okay.
I see you now. With the heading my phone, okay. Commissioner Johnson? Absent Commissioner Luciano? Absent Commissioner Mercado? Absent Commissioner Seepole? Absent Commissioner Vice President Amares? Absent and Commissioner President Richardson, absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have before me a notice from the clerk that this meeting is in full compliance with the Open Public Meetings Record Act.
Nah, I'd go on the camera.
I'm sorry?
Carl, you gotta mute yourself.
Okay. So today's purpose of today's meeting is to review the progress and activity that we made for calendar year 2021, to talk about some goals and objectives for 2022. And at this time, we're going to hear from the administration. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, as you know, we started this program a number of years back in 2019. We started it with a very modest sort of pilot program. I think we put the commissioners and administration, put about $5,000 into it. And we went through it and, you know, seemed to have to have some promise. And it's expanded quite a bit since then. We're now up to a budget of $50,000 for the program for this year. So we're excited about that. And just to kind of give you, Madam Chair, and the committee sort of an update on what we've done. We've done in 2019, we did 13 procedures, 13 cats. And 2020, we did 178. In 2021, we did 288. And so far this year, we've done 44, which is essentially at the pace that we did, same pace we were doing for 2021. But we're hoping, I think, you know, Jerry can elaborate on this later. But I think we're gonna, that pace will pick up quite a bit. Hopefully, we'll have a much bigger number for 2022. So in total, to date, we've done 523 procedures and have spent close to a little bit under $26,000 in that effort. So, and towns throughout Essex County have participated. So it's been, it's been good in that regard of getting, you know, getting, getting those to participate from all around. So that's been good, too. So I think moving in the right direction and, and, and good positive things report. We obviously would like to see us, we'd like to use that full $50,000 if we can. It gives, you know, it's an important issue. So that's pretty much where we are status-wise, Madam Chair. And we'll wait for your instructions or directions in terms of how you want to get Jerry involved or any other questions you or the other members of the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Can we hear from Jerry? Is there anything that she'd like to add to complement the overview that you just provided?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here. I'm on Jerry's computer because I couldn't get on with mine. Okay?
Oh, hi Pam, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, actually, in 2021, we did 308. And now we're up to, before we did about seven. So we're at about 62 for 2022. Okay?
Pam, if I could just interject, and the disparity there, Madam Chair, members of the committee would be, we have what was submitted for us to fund. So the, there's a, there's a gap between what Pam and our team have done versus what we've actually reimbursed them for. So that's the reason for the gap.
We have three more rescues that will trap for us. Rockin Rescue in Belleville does a big area, and they do a majority. Seepaw of New Jersey, fantastic. And they have helped out in training other people how to trap. The COVID issue, I think, played a part in not being able to do as many as we would have liked. And this past winter, they cannot trap if it's icy, snowy, bitter cold. Because unless you have somebody sitting next to the trap all night, you cannot leave the cat in a trap in those weather conditions. But we're hoping this spring, we can trap a large amount of cats. We have more people trapping this year than we had in previous years as well. So we're, we have a positive outlook for 2022.
Thank you for that response. Pam, how many people are we supporting for you for trapping? Do we need to increase that number and then maybe we can get a higher number?
Yeah, we're working on increasing that number. We have Danielle Vitale of Rockin Rescue. And she has another woman that helps her trap. We have Amy and Amanda from Seepaw, New Jersey. We have Miss Pat's Cats. She has trained Fran, who now is Fran's rescue. We have Shannon, and we have Mike Myers. Seepaw and Miss Pat and Danielle will help out if someone calls up with an issue with feral cats. I refer them to Danielle or Seepaw, then they will be trained how to trap the cats. You know, people just want to put them in a carrier. You can't do it that way. So we explain the protocol. I email them the protocol. And then one of the rescues or the trappers will train that person. So we'll have, we're trying to get more people trained how to trap the cats so that we could bring more cats in.
Is it possible, I know last year, one of the questions that had come up, for us to hold a formal training that we can advertise out loud? Since COVID, things are starting to level off a little bit. Do you think that that's something that we can do versus just doing it the way that Miss Pat is doing, if someone approached her about asking for training?
Yes, if it was put out there, it would work. Because people do have the cats, they just don't know what to do with them. So they just keep feeding them, but they're not being spayed or neutered. So they're just feeding more and more and more cats. Yeah, if it was put out there publicly that there was a training, I think that you would get some folks in to learn how to do it.
Okay. And then the other question that I have is what else can we do as the board, as the county, to raise more awareness and participation for so many other municipalities? To get involved, to reach out to you, work with you, any other community-based organizations? Because feral cats is a real reality in some of our communities, especially when we're densely populated.
I know. The, the, the community has to want to do it. Some communities, for some reason, they, they just say, "Don't feed the cats." That, that's not gonna work. People are gonna feed the cats, whether they're told not to or not. The communities have to be educated on why TNR works. It, it's the only solution. People are gonna feed cats, whether they're told you're gonna get a fine. They're gonna go in their backyard and feed the cats. The only way to eliminate these colonies, which of course takes time, is to spay and neuter these cats, because they will multiply rapidly. So if the, if the communities are educated on the process, and it's really not that difficult, once they're trapped, they're brought here, they're picked up, they're put back where they were trapped. It's, it's pretty simple, but they're just not educated on how the program works or how the spay-neutering eliminates these colonies. Education, putting it out there and educating the people is, is, is the answer.
Madam Chair, may I ask you, may I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Pam, right now, the way the process works, I understand that if we reimburse you guys 50 bucks for, for the procedure, because it's costly, and that's, do you think it would be effective if we also had an incentive? Maybe it's a financial incentive for people to bring in the cats? So that was, it's not just the procedure, but you get, you know, X dollars if you bring in a, if you trap and bring in a cat? Is that, would that, do you think that would help?
You mean the person bringing in the cat would get X amount of dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
It could, it could. As long as they know how to trap. We can't do a TNR cat in a regular cat carrier. It, it has to be the, the trapping.
Right, 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 right. I'm assuming they do it, you know, the right way. But I'm just wondering, is it, because I know most of the people who bring them in are just committed individuals who, you know, understand what needs to be done. But, you know, there, there are those, there's other types of folks, too, who, you know, get incentivized other ways. So I'm just throwing it out there.
That's, that's real.
It is, it is. I think that would, that would help. You know, we just, it just has to be put out there constantly. And as long as the people are educated, I think they'd be willing to do it because they don't want, you know, 25 cats in their backyard.
Right, right.
So, so Mr. Jackson, let me ask of you. Can we put together a little, and by working with Pam, or build this into the contract or something that we have with them, to come up with some kind of information campaign that we could, you know, blast out to the public at large and wrap in this, this incentive that you're talking about? Either a cash incentive or what I keep hearing from folks in this community is a huge need for, you know, like materials for the cats that they're taking care of, like food and things like that. Or maybe like, you know, like a coupon to go buy, you know, food from like the ShopRite or someplace like that. It could be another incentive.
That's an excellent idea. If you bring in, you know, a cat, like one cat makes a big difference. If you bring in a cat or two cats, we'll give you, you know, three bags of dry cat food. So you're not, you know, paying to feed these feral cats. That, that's like an excellent idea.
Through you, through you, Madam Chair, my question would be, are we not self-defeating in that regard? In other words, I'm giving you, I don't want you to feed the cats, right? But I'm giving you food to feed the cats, so.
If they're trapping and having them spayed and neutered, I mean, feeding them is fine. It's the people that are feeding them and not getting right, taken care of.
Okay, so, so the assumption is that if I bring those cats in, the ones that I'm feeding are gonna be cats that have had procedures?
Right, right. That's what I'm thinking. Because I'm listening to what Pam, the overview that Pam just gave. The reality is, is these people are feeding them now no matter what. They're, they're feeding them, but they're not bringing them in. And so what, what Pam is saying is they're feeding them, but we want to bring them in. So to your point, we could incentivize it by saying $5 a cat, you know? Or $10 a cat, how, whatever, numerical number we want to put to it to incentivize them. Or a bag of cat food for every cat that you bring in. Because whether they bring them in or not, these people are feeding them. I mean, on my street alone, there's cans of food that people place out there to feed the feral cats that's in my neighborhood. And, or the other thing would be, Mr. Jackson, perhaps, since Pam said they can't come in in a carrier, is there some specialized kind of equipment or a cage that they, that they need? Maybe if we provide a training and, and some of this equipment might, might, may help us. Especially since we're not spending all the money that we've allocated. Maybe take some additional steps to help us become more effective with meeting our goal.
Yes, if, then, all right, we'll, we'll supply you with the trap. And once, you know, they catch a few cats, hopefully every cat in their backyard, and then they can return the trap. And else could use the trap.
Right.
As long, as long as they're trained, the trap system works. They just don't feed them for a day, and then they put the food in the trap. And they, if they're hungry enough, they'll go in and get the food.
So, Mr. Jackson, can we have Pam, the, the organization, do a training for us?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, ma'am, as we can, Madam Chair. Yeah, the other, just Pam, could you, how much does a trap cost? I have no.
I would have no idea on how much a trap would cost. I find out for you. And also, if we come up with an incentive program, I could have it put on our website and our Facebook as well for Essex County residents.
Okay. We can, we can do that, Madam Chair.
Yeah. All right. So, Ms. Pam, do you guys currently, like, how do you do your outreach? As I've gotten a couple of emails from folks who are saying that they, they don't know, like, are people just physically bringing a cat to you? Or I, I know for a while you wasn't doing the outreach with that van and things for a while. So, so just walk me through how it works now, so I can give a response back to the two or three emails that I've gotten from people.
If people are interested, they just have to email me. They can email me. Are they talking about?
A person whose phone number ends in 673, please put yourself on mute.
You'll have an opportunity to speak and make some public comments at the end, whoever that is that's talking. So just hold your thoughts for a minute, please. So, Ms. Pam, what's, what, what is the email and the phone number for folks that are listening right now?
My phone number is 973-824-7080. And I am at extension 118.
And what's the email?
My email is P as in Paul, P as in Paul, A as in Apple, R as in Robert, I as in Igloo, S as in Sam, I as in Igloo, O as in Oscar, at A H S P P Z as in zebra.org.
All right, so I'm gonna read that back. P P A R I S I O at A H S P P Z dot org.
Correct.
Thank you. All right, so if we can, Mr. Jackson, put on a timeline to host a training within the next 90 days for this community would be great. And then how long do you think we'll need to come up with this kind of what you want your incentive structure to look like? Do you need like 30 days, 60 days to develop something? Okay. So that we can.
Yes, Madam Chair, that would, that would work well. Then it should be, to your earlier point, it could be everything rolled out at the same time.
All right, perfect. Ms. Pam, do you guys have flyers, resources that we could email out to people and post on our Facebook page and our website on your behalf? So that people can know where they can go to get things? Can you email those things to us? And then we can take care of circulating them and moving those things around?
Do you want me to send them directly to you?
Madam Clerk, would you like me to receive that on your behalf?
Yes, please.
My email is D as in Deborah, D as in, D Davis Ford. So D Davis Ford at commissioners, that's plural, dot Essex County NJ dot org.
Okay, so it's D Davis Ford or just Davis Ford?
No, D Davis Ford.
D Davis Ford at commissioners dot Essex County, New Jersey dot org.
Yes, but just initials, NJ, not New Jersey spelled out.
Right, right, NJ dot.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll compile what we have. If you want to make changes, and just let me know. And we can, you know, update it to however you feel works best. And we'll get it out there. You know, education is key in this endeavor.
I would agree. Education is key to a whole lot of things. So, Ms. Pam, thank you so much. Mr. Jackson, is there anything else that you'd like to add that we may have missed? Forgot to go over before I go and see if there's any public comments?
I, I think we're good, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can you see if there's anybody from the public that wants to make a comment, like the gentleman that was just trying to speak a moment ago?
Yes. Lionel, do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak?
You know, just raise up the hand on your, on your call thing if you can, Zoom, so we can acknowledge you, recognize you.
Lionel's checking now.
Yes, there's no one actually that has raised their hand.
There's no one, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. So I think we've gone over everything on the agenda. Just to recap, we will look to host a training for people interested in trapping feral cats within various communities within a 90-day timeline from this day forward. Also, at the same time, we'll be looking to roll out some kind of incentive program to increase awareness and participation among the community where folks who are already currently feeding the cats, but they're not bringing them in. Oh, Ms. Pam, I knew it was something. Are you taking the mobile ban out right now or people coming directly to you?
Right now, they're coming directly to us. We're hoping, starting in June, we might start to be able, you know, for now that things are kind of quieting down with the COVID. We're gonna try to start getting it out. Right now, we only have wellness two days a month because our staffing is a little short at the, you know, we, we're in need of another vet to go out daily on the mobile. So right now, we can do twice a month. And then Thursdays, we do mail cats privately owned. And Saturday, if you want, if you can reach out to people in Newark, that would be awesome. The 26th, this Saturday, we are having a pet wellness day for Newark residents only. They have to have photo ID. They're, they will receive a free rabies shot, a free distemper shot, and a free microchip. And we are doing 20 female cat spays on that day as well. We're gonna try to do this like quarterly so that they can get, you know, free rabies shot, free distemper shot, free microchip, dog or cat, either one. As long as they, it starts at nine, it ends at four. It's first come, first served. It's on our website, or I can email it to you as well, that information. I'll email you our little flyer that we have. And if they're in need of vaccines, you know, just tell them, please come and line up. Just bring proof of ID, you know, photo ID. And, you know, we'll take care of those. Those are the two main vaccines.
So would you please send that to us as well as the, the dates of various things that you just outlined? If there's certain days that they can come with just a cat under our program that, that we're trying to push would be helpful? Like if there's days that they cannot come? Also, it would probably kind of be helpful, because what I'm hearing is some communities feel like Newark is getting all of your attention and they're not feeling the love. So what can we do to tweak it a little bit to make them equally feel?
We will be doing, we will be doing this for other communities as well. The first one is gonna be, is gonna be Newark. And then, you know, throughout the year, we'll do other communities. But we're gonna, we're starting with Newark because the mobile's here, and we're not really taking it out. So it's easy for the people of Newark to come.
Through you, Madam Chair. Would Pam give the location? You gave the date and the time, but not the location in Newark?
Yeah, it's, it's right in front of the shelter on Evergreen. And I will email you the flyer as well that gives the information. And it is on our website, and it is on our Facebook. And anyone that's calling for vaccines that, you know, live in Newark, I am letting them know so they can participate in this as well. It's just right now, community outreach. And we're going to try to do it at least four times a year to other communities other than Newark. You know, like to Orange or Belleville, or, you know, different towns. Elizabeth, we do, we do so many towns. We're just trying to broaden our services because so many people got left, you know, in the lurch during COVID.
Sure, absolutely. And that's, and I think that accounts for the couple of emails that I received that people are feeling like the issue kind of got like put on the back burner. And they're trying their best to see how could, how could their community receive services or get connected to you? So that's why it's important for me to give them all the information, to tell them the days and times that they can come, what the expectations are, so that they can get service and that we can address this feral cat community. What number are you located at on Evergreen, please?
124 Evergreen.
124 Evergreen in Newark.
In Newark, Evergreen Avenue in Newark. It's right off of Freeland Heisen. And anyone that calls from anywhere, when we have appointments available for wellness, for cat nutters, they, they, they still come. They will come to Newark if they will receive the services that we service people from all over right now. They, they, they're coming to Newark. Hopefully, we can get them out, you know, to the, to the cities and the towns soon.
And do you, so I have a couple of questions that folks emailed to me. I want to ask you real quick. Do you do adoption events? And when can people find out about them? On your website, like how is it advertised?
They can go to AHS Cares. And if there's an adoption event, it will be on that, that website.
AHS Cares is the adoption event information?
Yeah, it's our website, and all they have to do is click on events, and they'll come up. Let me see. We have. I believe we do. The next event is our pet wellness. No, I don't see, the last adoption event was on February 20th. But I can find out when the next one is going to be.
Okay, perfect. And then the other question that was posed to me is, is there a food pantry place for people to get cat and or dog food for people who need?
Right now, we don't have that, but I can reach out to Jerry and see if he would like to try to work something out. We do have in the shelter right now, when people come in, even if they come in to get their cat neutered on Thursday or a wellness visit, we have like leashes and little coats and things like that in the shelter. And they can pick three, any three items they want at no cost to them.
Okay.
You know, like leashes, those little poopy bags, you know, things like that. But those things. But those things cost money.
Sure, sure.
And at the event, this event on Saturday, we'll be making up bags with, like tote bags with, you know, some items in it. Like leashes, collars, harnesses, you know, the little poop bag things, cat toys, things like that. So they're going to receive a little, you know, parting gift, if you may, as well.
Madam Chair?
Hi, Mr. McInerney.
Hi, I had, I had a quick question.
Sure.
What, what, what's put in place so you know you're not putting a cat through the process twice? You don't get the same cat twice.
They're ear tipped.
Oh, they are, okay.
They're ear tipped and so they'll get a little tattoo on their belly.
Oh, okay.
But the ear, because they're feral, you know, you're not going to be able to get close to them. But if they are ear tipped, you'll see, I, I believe it's their left ear, the little corners off, then you know they're already taken care of.
Okay. Good you have a system. Thank you, Mr. McInerney, for that question. Great question. Commissioners, any questions? None? All right, so I'm going to attempt to recap again and not get distracted by other questions. So, Mr. Jackson, we have a 90-day timeline for coming up with our training that we like to host for folks interested in trapping and having the feral cats neutered. And we have a 30 to 60-day window for coming up for what we would like the financial incentive program outreach awareness campaign that you recommended, what we would like that to look like. And Ms. Pam, you're going to email the clerk of the board, Deborah Davis Ford, the information that we can share and post on our website that highlight the resources and the various programs and services, days and operations that your organization is open so that people can come in and participate and take part in the county of Essex paying for feral cats to be neutered?
Yes.
Did I miss anything? Okay, so perfect.
That's, I think, I think you covered it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. So, Madam Clerk, if all hearts and minds are clear, I don't have anything else on the agenda. Ms. Pam, if you or Mr. Jackson don't have anything else to add or the commissioners have a comment, we can take a motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and close the meeting.
I think that I'm good. And if I think of anything else, I will email it along with the flyers.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pam. Mr. Jackson, anything?
I'm, I'm good as well, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. And Commissioners, no comments? All right, so then, Madam Clerk, I will entertain a motion to end this meeting. So thank you, Mr. Jackson, for you and your staff participating. Thank you, Ms. Pam. Thank you, Deborah Davis Ford, you and the staff for helping me put this committee meeting together. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, well done.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.